Now I'll call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. We'll welcome everyone who's come to the meeting tonight, and also those will be watching the meeting on G10 television. To begin the meeting, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Brian Jackson followed by the invocation. Please advise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for the beautiful weather. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us. We thank you for the opportunity to be here together as a community and to discuss the items that impact our citizens, Lord. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your peace for our city council and our mayors that make those decisions that impact 72,000 people every single day, Lord. We're so blessed to be in this community, to have the partnerships that we have, to have the relationships that make us stronger, Lord, and we're better for how we are because we have you that guide us in our principles and our thoughts and our minds and our actions and our relationships with each other every single day. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for the fellowship of this community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, you have furnished a copy of the agenda for the night's meeting, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Oh, let me, we're going to rearrange something real quick. I don't think it should interfere with your motion, but we're going to move the closed session to after the One City Report. Okay?
Motion amended for the new request. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have our public comment for this evening. I've had two people have signed up, and if you would just come to the podium and give your name to the clerk and your address, and I'll call first Mr. William Lee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. As I stated, I'm William Lee. I served the city of Jacksonville in the Fire Department for 28 years, eight months. I retired February 1, 2019 at the rank of Fire Battalion Chief. During my time at the Fire Department, I fought a lot of fire, answered a lot of first responder calls, extricated people from vehicles, and helped to keep the citizens of Jacksonville safe. The reason I'm here this evening is I was made aware that the city made an error in the way that firefighter pay was calculated. This included overtime pay, both holiday and vacations accrual. I reached out to Human Resources and was directed to the city attorney who confirmed that there had been an error and that 97 letters would be sent out to the affected people. She also sent me an email that contained a one-page letter with some highlights that included the law requiring a two-year look back. I feel that there is much more to this issue than I'm being told. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting a detailed report that includes a timeline from when the error was discovered back to when the error was made. It should also include the amount of money the error represents and how much the loss was to each firefighter during this time period. I would like it presented publicly as an agenda item. Lastly, I'm requesting each council member, give your stance on how you feel this issue was handled. The public deserves to know. I deserve to know. Integrity means that you do what's right even when it's hard, and I find it very challenging to understand how you can be entertaining $155 million sports complex, but you can't pay the firefighters what they worked so hard for. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Bert Regelsberger.
Good evening. My name is retired Lieutenant Bert Regelsberger. Stand before you today as a retired former officer of Jacksonville Fire Department, addressing an issue that not only affects the livelihoods of our firefighters, but also undermines the trust in city leadership, the gross negligence at handling overtime and salary payments to fire service personnel. Firefighters do not work a standard nine-to-five. We answer the call at all hours, in middle of the night, weekends, holidays, in dangerous conditions to keep the community safe. Overtime is not a luxury in this profession. It is necessary, born from short-staffing, increased emergency response demands, and mandatory holdovers. It is not compensation. It is compensation for time already served, not a favor, not a bonus, but earned wages under the law. Yet we're seeing clear and repeated failures. Once again, the incompetence of city administration is balanced on the back of the Fire Department. This is not just a budgeting issue. This is a legal and moral failure. These place unnecessary financial burden on firefighters and their families, many who live paycheck-to-paycheck. It affects morale, retention, and ultimately, public safety. I urge this council to treat this with urgency it demands. This is not just about overtime. This is about basic respect, fairness, and professionalism. Our firefighters keep showing up. It's time for the city to show up for them. Thank you.
Sir, may I have your address, please?
98 Mudders.
98?
Avery Mudders.
Thank you.
Next, I have the adoption of minutes from the June 3, 2025 workshop meeting, and there are several consent items on here. I believe it's 12 of them.
Mr. Ray, I move adoption of the minutes and consent items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have number 13 as a public hearing, and this will be the, if I can get to it, Legislative Action Plan, our annual action report, and I think... Pam, you're going to present this one. Page there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you doing?
Good evening.
It is a pleasure to be before you this evening as we present the Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and we'll also have Ms. LaShawn Harson present on our nonprofit grant allocation this evening. Just to familiarize, our Annual Action Plan is based off of the Community Development Block Grant Funds that we receive from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. HUD assures that when we're spending the funds that we are utilizing it to meet the national objectives, which benefit low and moderate income persons or an area, we're removing slum and blight, and we're also addressing an urgent need, where in the past, our urgent need has been with COVID-19 funds that we received. As we're utilizing with the national objectives, we want to make sure that everything that we do is ensuring that we're providing decent, safe, and sanitary housing, that we're also providing suitable living environments, and we're also taking the opportunity to expand our economic opportunities and growth within the city. When we start the Annual Action Plan, we began back in November of last year. The process will extend all the way through the deadline of July 13, 2025, which is the deadline that we have to submit. We do plan to submit it much earlier than July 13. During that planning process, this is an opportunity that we're before citizens when we have our homebuyer education courses, our money management. We also take the opportunity to do public input meetings. This year in January, we provided a mid-year public hearing that allowed for the citizens to hear what we have completed thus far. We also conclude with nonprofit funding workshops and our annual nonprofit board development conference. So those are opportunities that allows us to be before the citizens and our partners in the community with nonprofits. As a result of the planning process, we placed our survey online in addition to receiving the input in person, and this year, we received 153 responses. Those responses are what we use to help plan our Annual Action Plan in itself because we are taking the input of our citizens to let us know what do they want to see us complete within the community using our Community Development Block Grant Funds. The Annual Action Plan that we are presenting for tonight is in the second year of our five-year consolidated plan, which covers from 2024 through 2028. Our allocation that we expect to receive from HUD is $422,000 for our entitlement funds. Our program income, which is received over previous loans that's been given in the past, projects at $225,000. So we're looking at a total budget of $647,000 that we're going to utilize to spend in fiscal year '25 through '26. This graph allows you to see what we have accomplished in over the past eight years with our entitlement fund. It gives you an average where you see we've kind of balanced out between $374,000 to $400,000, and in our new allocation for fiscal year '25, we've had a decrease of $14,000 from last year's funds. So you'll see the drop there. Uh-oh. I think I got a pause. Thank you. So when it comes to spending our allocation funds, we have to focus within our citywide, covering the city of Jacksonville, but also we utilize funds within New River because it was identified in our Census Track 26 as being one of our low-moderate-income areas specifically. And then we focus within the downtown area when we're looking at expanding our economic growth. There we go. And you'll see in our budget that we do have economic development included in our Annual Action Plan because we had an opportunity to partner within this current five-year plan with Genesis Block, who is helping us expand economic growth by working with our business owners that are striving to become business owners or are already business owners, and they are receiving technical assistance. So the breakdown of $647,000 is shown here, and this is our proposed allocation. So based off of the survey, the community told us exactly where we need to focus at, and this year, the focus shifted to affordable housing being number one. Within affordable housing, that focus placed on rehab, whether it's looking at primary owner property or rental housing opportunities, and also looking at new single-family housing construction. And just to throw in a excerpt, that we currently have two houses under construction on Anne Street. Our suitable living environment, that allows us to provide the education and technical assistance from homeownership and as a HUD-approved housing counseling agency, and public services continue the partnership that we do with our nonprofit agencies. Homelessness still remains a priority, ensuring that we're looking at prevention opportunities, but also identifying transitional housing or rapid rehousing with our agencies. And then our population of assistance is focusing on children and elderly persons and veterans. So these results came specifically from our survey and the needs that the citizens are telling us to focus on when it comes to spending our funds. Next. Thank you. The initiatives that we are currently utilizing within our current Annual Action Plan focuses, again, on providing down payment assistance. This allows us to provide up to $25,000 with City of Jacksonville funds, and as a partner with North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency, that also allows us to provide funds through our community partner loan pool assistance. Clearance and demolition allows us to, again, focus on removing that slum and blight. It also allows us to partner with the Fire Department when we do training exercises, if it's an opportunity for them to do a live burn or to just go in and do training without having to be under the stress of an actual burn. And then acquisition reconstruction is through the scattered sites within City of Jacksonville. And continuing with our rehab, again, through owner occupants or through rental opportunities, provide for low-income housing, and continue with our nonprofit agencies and partnership with our developers when we're looking at multifamily rental housing, where we currently have two developers we're working with now, with East Carolina Community Development and with Carolina State Law. At this time, Mayor?
Thank you, Pam. At this time, we'll hold a public hearing that's required on approval of this plan. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? Please indicate by raising your hand. This time, we'll close the public hearing. Reconvene to regular council meeting. Counsel, any questions of Pam before we move further? Okay. We're going to talk about the funding for nonprofits a little bit more.
Okay. At this time, I'll bring up Ms. LaShawn Harson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening to talk to you about our FY26 funding allocation for our nonprofits. As you may well know, these partnerships with our nonprofits is important because they provide services for our community members that the city would otherwise have to provide. We've also, working with these agencies, we've identified two of the strategic goals that these agencies meet that have been adopted by our city council, such as improving the quality of life and meeting the needs of our local community. We've also identified that they are meeting strategic goals that have been set by HUD for years 2022 and 2026, such as supportive of underserved communities and advanced sustainable communities. As you see before you, it's a budget that we've allocated for funding our nonprofits during FY26. For general fund, we've identified $77,000 for funding. With our Community Development Block Grant Funding, we've identified $50,000 for a total of $127,000. And as you can see, our FY26 requested budget for our nonprofit agencies well surpasses what we've set aside for them. Before you, you have four agencies that apply for our Community Development Block Grant Funding. We've worked with these agencies before, and as you will see, for FY26, requests surpass what was funded in FY25 and what is recommended for FY26 at $45,000. We've worked with these five agencies that apply for our general funding for FY26. Next slide, please. And what was requested for FY26 surpasses what was requested during FY25 and what is recommended for FY26. Mayor and Council, it is our recommendation that you adopt the FY25, '26 Annual Action Plan and approve its submission to HUD, as well as approve the review committee's recommendations for FY26 funding. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. So at this time, Counsel, you've been asked to approve the, adopt the plan.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion that council adopt the fiscal year 2025, '26 Annual Action Plan, approve its submission to HUD, and approve the nonprofit grants allocation funding as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That brings us to our reports for this evening, and I'm going to start with Mr. Ward.
No report, sir.
I'll just say, summer is upon us. Be summer safety-wise, whether you have children around you in the water and the heat and yourself. Make sure you stay hydrated and be careful of the heat, and happy Fourth of July. That will be coming up before we meet again.
Dr. Washington.
Kudos to you, Mayor, for the state of the community.
Thank you.
And your report that you gave to us. Also, kudos to the Oslo County Civic Affairs in recognition of our Juneteenth holiday, which will be upon us on this coming Thursday, and our upcoming Fourth of July celebration. Also, just want to remind the public that we are officially into hurricane season. So, Mr. Ray, if we have any footages from previous years with regards to preparation for our hurricane seasons, just to reiterate to our citizen, God forbid, we're planning that none occurs this year to us, but just to put on their forefront that we are in the season until November 30th, and to help for preparation for our citizens. Other than that, happy to be here. Thank you.
Mayor Portembitter.
No report.
Mr. Sosa.
No report.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, I'd just like to say congratulations to all the graduates for this year. You've done a lot of hard work to get to where you are. Now the even harder work comes now. Also, I'd like to say to those of us that's in leadership, it is difficult to make decisions we do. And when we make these decisions, they do affect lives. I mean, whether we figure out what we do with our homeless, how we pay our employees, I just hope we can work to do better going forward in all that we do. First of all, we got to be better at taking care of each other and communicate with each The future is in our hands to help create a better one. But with all that's going on in our communities now, we have to really take stock in what's going on, and we're going to have to get better at understanding and communicate with each other to avoid problems going into the future. We don't think sometimes what happens in DC or what happens in Minnesota can happen here. Anybody could become upset or distraught based on what has affected them directly, and our whole community may be affected by it. So we just got to get, we just got to get better in trying to communicate. I apologize to anybody that I didn't communicate with properly, and all I can say is that I'll work and do better. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of items that we'd like to present to the community tonight for our One City Moment. This first item, the Kits for Kids, is a partnership between Oslo County Sheriff's Department and Jacksonville Police Department in preparing over 200 outreach kits for those youth that are at a house that our officers respond to. These kits include toys, puzzles, comfort items, words of encouragement. The idea behind the kits are to build positive relationships between our youth and our police and deputies. It's an awesome outreach effort. You see our chief and the team here. The sheriff is there. This is something that is really important for us. If you think about those outreach efforts, some of those issues that Mr. Jackson talked about and able to communicate, a lot of times, there are people that are not the direct action of our officers when they respond, but our officers take it to the next level to engage with those youth to make sure they understand, hopefully, that the police are there to be partners, community leaders, and an aid to them as they grow. So a great partnership for our police and the Sheriff's Department to put these together and to be excellent stewards of our One City Initiative. This week, we are upon the New River Institutes. We're on Week One, so you have a lot of city staff that are active. These are not city staff that you see off the stage, but the New River Institutes has youth leaders, and these youth leaders are doing what they can to make the New River Institutes a success. What are they doing? They're making a staple in my diet of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. None of these sandwiches came to City Hall, unfortunately, so I cannot taste test them, but they look like they have grape jelly, which is phenomenal. This is part of our leadership for our future leaders. What an excellent opportunity to work together, people of all ages coming together, and to educate our community in media and arts, in sciences, and to be a part of extension for our New River story, which is, that's our story. You'll see Ms. Edwards teaching something here. I'm not sure what she's teaching, but it looks like there's a picture, and she's probably drawing on a piece of paper. But this is great community and action where we're able to offer up opportunities for our students to engage for four weeks of classes, and this is the 26th year of our educational programs out at Sturgeon City. And the partnership between Sturgeon City and the New River Institutes is phenomenal. Hopefully, we're looking forward to the next 26 years and excellent partnership here. And you'll see right here, typically, what you see is John Outhouse is behind the camera, but in this situation, he's showing a young lady how to utilize that camera. And for a lot of people that are looking at the screen right now at home, they don't even know what this black thing is that he's pointing at. They're trying to figure out if it's an Apple phone or if it's a Samsung. This is a Canon camera that was used back in the day to take still pictures of people. It's mind-blowing. If he would have had a Polaroid, it'd be even better. I bet he's got one somewhere. But John is an excellent partner of ours, too. He's all over the place. He's typically doing this. He's at the New River Institutes, and he's also playing pickleball. If you want a challenging game of pickleball, go meet John, and he'll probably beat you in that game. So a great partnership that we have between multiple people here in the community, New River Institutes and Sturgeon City. And the last picture I've got for you, Mayor, is Sammy meets Sammy right here. This is Sammy the Silly Goose, and this is Mayor Sammy Phillips. What they're doing right here is they're showing you the first-place team, the Jacksonville Osprey. Nine wins, one loss, more home runs this year, lower ERA, and civic pride that is incredible. People are showing up, even when it's raining, waiting to get to the games because our team is tied for first place, and it's got to be because of Sammy and Sammy. There's no other mathematical reason why we're batting over 300 as a team except for Sammy and Sammy doing the work. Thank you, Mayor.
Laura.
Nothing for you, sir. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go into, I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss land acquisition.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All exclusive vacation.
A motion to go out of closed session and back into, uh, closed session.
So moved.
No second.
Second.
Good discussion.
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I will turn it over to the attorney, our city attorney, to go ahead and explain actions that have been taken as far as closed session.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. So we went into closed session to identify some property for acquisition by the city. That property is identified as 9 Tallman Street in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and its current owners are the United States Federal Government. It is being It is being handled by the GSA, which is a department of the federal government. The city is looking at acquiring this property for the purpose of the public use. In that purpose of acquisition, we have taken formal action to adopt that purpose. The council has also taken formal action by vote, unanimous vote, to delegate our deputy city manager, Mr. Ronald F. Massey, as the person with the authority to negotiate the acquisition of this land. And that does conclude all of the action that was taken in closed session that is for the public record in open session.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed.